It's six o'clock. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting for Perry City Council, November 7th, 2017, to order please. We have four. Item three is the invocation of the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, would you please rise? For the invocation, I would like to call on Councilman and Reverend Rudy J. King with the Faith and Bible Fellowship.
Thank you, Father. You thank us so much for the opportunity that we can live in the city, that we can do things together. I want to thank you for the group, Lord, the program that we've always had. I thank you for all the people that participated in the program. I pray that they got to learn something. I pray not for our misbehavior in the city. I pray not for the wisdom that you give to us and for these councilmen tonight, that we'll take that goodness for the city. We do thank you with grace, with Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hockley, this is the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, our recognitions and presentations. Item four A is the recognition of and the presentation of certificates for the 2017 Your City Program participants. Ms. Palm.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, tonight, we have Sandra Hill calling up here. As y'all know, we've had a Your City Program going on for the last few months, and the participants are here. And I can't say enough about our first group, the Your City. They were an engaging group. They asked questions. They were interested. They were a fun group, which I think is always important, to have a little fun while we're learning. So, again, my expectations were greatly exceeded with this group, and I just couldn't be happier to look down at this program. I think it's going to do a lot for the city and our citizens. So, I did prepare a little short slideshow of the sessions that I might call the City Week. So, as you can see, we did a lot of different things with all the different departments. We had fun, and all the department heads did a wonderful job in putting on a wonderful program for each of them, because they're passionate about their jobs, they understand what's going on, and they definitely came back to this first group. So, with that, as I called her name, she come up, and I would like to present to you the certificate and a little plaque for participating in the first ever Your City Program. All right, Jesse Willhite. Stay up here, because we're going to take a picture.
Y'all have heard more about the city of Perry than you ever thought possible, and most of it, I understand, you stayed awake for, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Y'all have done a fantastic job. More importantly, I hope that you come away with this program with a deeper and more appreciation for what your city is doing on a day-to-day basis. Most people never realize the depth and the experience and the talent that is necessary not just to run any city, but the high qualities of individuals we have running this city, your city. We're very proud of that. It doesn't go unnoticed by myself or council. We take great pride in the fact that we hire the right people for the right jobs and then get out of the way and let them do their jobs. Then they hire the right people to help them accomplish the tasks. You have witnessed in this program why the city of Perry is the city of Perry, and you also witnessed what the factor that you call, not necessarily the "it" factor, but it gets on you. When you get here, it doesn't get off, and you come back again, again, and again. It's not just people, but it's the relationships these people forge among themselves, among the community, and then it spreads from there. Again, I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedules to participate, and I hope you learned a little bit, and we've got every one of your names. We want you involved. We want you involved, because you see how important it is for your involvement, but not only for yourselves, your families, but this city, this community, and this state. It's critical, and that's another reason we're so successful, because we have the brightest and we have the best, and you exemplify that. Again, I thank you, and congratulations.
Okay, everybody? Everybody facing this way? And we're going to have another one, too, where council members are going to pop up behind them here. Kind of lured over them there. Please feel free to join in.
We have one more proclamation to give. This is also a proclamation that observes Red Ribbon Week. We have someone here with Red Ribbon Week campaign. You would tell us who you are, who you represent.
My name is Chris Dalbright, also known as Corporal Albright. We are with the Little Georgia Young Marines. What we are, is we're a nonprofit organization that does Red Ribbon Week with our unit, Learn to Live a Drug-Free Life.
I am PFC Gentry, and I am with the Little Georgia Young Marines unit.
I'm Scarlett Albright. I am the battalion adjutant, medicate. I am our commander's right-hand woman. Whatever he says, I jump and do.
Well, thank y'all for being here and bringing this to our attention. If you would, let me read this proclamation. Observing Red Ribbon Week October 23rd through the 31st, 2017. Whereas, communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in there. And whereas, there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Warner Robbins Young Marines of the Marine Corps League, to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas, governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas, the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique "Kiki" Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represented the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23rd through the 31st, 2017, has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, James E. Fairclough Jr., Mayor of the City of Perry, do hereby proclaim October 21st through the 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week in Perry, Georgia, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. So proclaim to this seventh day of November in the year of our Lord, 2017, as signed, James E. Fairclough Jr., Mayor, City of Perry. And it's my distinct honor and privilege to present you with this proclamation, and thank you for the job that you continue to do on behalf of arresting drugs, specifically in our country. Thank y'all very much. Congratulations. Item five, our community partner updates. Do we have any community partners with us who wish to make a presentation or update us on your activities at this time?
Ma'am, you told me you wanted to speak now.
No, not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not yet. Thank you. Item six, our appointments for boards, commissions, and authorities. Item six A is the appointment to the Perry-Hasten County Airport Authority Council. You've got in your packet information that one of the members that we have appointed, Mr. McDonald, has decided to stop being a member of that particular authority, and it is incumbent upon us to appoint a replacement. I have asked him in a previous meeting if he could consider this appointment, and at some point in the near future, if he would, let me know of any names that you might have that might have an interest in serving in that capacity. If he would, keep this on the agenda until... Thank you. Item seven, for citizens with input. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how many people have noticed, but there are signs around town that say, combat wounded veterans.
Ma'am, excuse me. Can you state your name and address?
Oh.
I'm sorry, we just need to know who you are.
Jean Veer, and I live in Gatwick, Illinois Department.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. As I said before, there are signs around town, even in Warner Robbins, that say, combat wounded veterans parking. There are people that continue to park in those spots, and nothing is done about it. We're not going to do anything about it. Why waste the money to make the sign? Why waste the money to have the sign put up? That's a waste of money. We need to enforce that. I'm from a military family, and I don't park in that spot. And my brother fought in the war, and was blown down over the hill, airbagged to Jervan Hospital. And I do not park in that spot. Anybody else should. I think they should get first warning, second time, a ticket. That's what I have to say about that. Then, I want to know about my peaceman getting a raise. They need a raise. We have a couple peacemen that in December were off-duty and went out at night when they were off-duty to find this lady that the family was looking for. And I think they should be given a raise, but I don't think one should be given without all of them. And if you enforce these signs and give out tickets, you have money to give these raises. Now, I'm telling you, I don't like that. And every Wednesday, I go over to Rosa Park, and I get upset. Now, if they want to get a handicap parking, get there at seven in the morning like I do. Dinka don't start till 10:30, but you can sit in your car till 10:30. I sit there till 10 o'clock and then go in. So, that's that. And then, well, that covers about parking. Then we have a lady that parked in that spot. I don't know what year she did it, but she filed a report that her jewelry had been stolen and had not been stolen. It was put in a lock box. She collected insurance, so guess what? She's got her diamonds and her money, too. And I don't think that's right.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I will refer most of your comments to Chief Lynn.
Chief Lynn, do you hear me?
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. You may now...
Good afternoon to everyone. I get honored to talk to all of us over at the... who is all over the place. I've been gone since July 14th, and finally came back home.
Tell us who you are.
My name is Dariane Wolfbach. I live at 926 Lewis Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I like to say this now. I'm back in the big PG, Perry, Georgia, no place like home. And we came up to the fess. Me and my sister from St. Petersburg, we came in Tampa, too. And we really had a good time. And I thank Carl Duncan Jr., that's a lot of work, and Robert Junior, and some more sponsors sponsored this, you know. And the Sito Perry, y'all ate pink water. And the food, I tasted it right. It was fantastic. I said, I took my food, that's old food, copper green. And the ribs, everything was good, and I noticed the people that were serving the food, they had a glove, and that's what I like about it so much. And the one girl put me some meat on there. I said, oh, put some more meat on there. I'm kind of a cow, I love meat. So she put some more meat on there. And the funnest thing, we went down there, left my car, me and my sister, we've got people from St. Petersburg and Tampa. I had a ball. I really enjoyed it. I tell you, I really enjoyed it. And so I was out there dancing, Mr. Gayle Mo and Mr. Roddy Hunt. And the man asked, Ms. Jean, something's going on with that dancing. He said, that's one big city, I'm supposed to get out of town a long time. So I stepped back there, went to the man, I said, come on, let's do it. He said, no, that I can't do it like you do it. But we had a good time, and the people from Tampa and St. Petersburg, they wished they had a came up and... Was it Marvin Senior one time? Oh, he told me he seen all of the words. But Carl had told my sister Emma to come up, but she didn't put in for the time off. But I really enjoyed it. And somebody dancing, I went down there, I went home and put me some hot water in the tub. When you ain't dancing a long time, you get sore. And put me some green alcohol in there, and some acid salt. I went and hit me a cocktail till I get me baby, because I ain't want to fall in the tub. And I got me a cocktail, boy, I slept good. I really slept good. And Carl keep up his good work, but this ain't easy. I'm going to tell you something, I did one time, I got angry with Mr. Gayle Mo. My pride won't ask for forgiveness. Some people have pride, they're pride too big, they won't ask for the forgiveness. I called Mr. Gayle Mo, and I was, ooh, I was heartless, firecracker. And what I said to her, I should have said, African-American and Cajun, but I said, white eagle. He said, don't go there, Mr. Wolfbach. I already don't want that. But I called him back and begged him pardon, and he told me, said, yeah, I accept your pardon. But I should have said the right thing, but he kept mad. I'm like, I'm going to get mad, I'm going to get mad. And he called me back. I called him back, and I said, will you accept my pardon? He said, sure, I will. I said, I'm sorry for what I said. I should have said, African-American and Cajun. If I'm not saying that right, y'all know what I'm talking about. And so, Mr. Gayle Mo been sitting on the front porch. I was sitting on my front porch, and I'm like, yeah. He came, he got his beer, I got some liquor, and he went down the street, Jean V, and he came, he came up on the air row. I was sitting on the front porch, and he looked down, he at the street, and he went on down, he came back, went down, we're at the street. So, the next day, he something, guy's so little, he wasn't supposed to do. And I really appreciate it, what he did. And another thing, we're not going to get rid of those bad hodies over there.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. And I was sitting down one morning, early one morning, and I get up early in the morning time, and I looked around, I saw a snake coming across the road. I said, what? Coming from across that, was it a store? And I called down here and told the girl, the one over the grass curtain, and I told her, I said, I saw a snake. I'm sitting on my front porch, eating my breakfast, I saw that snake coming from across that road. And she said she was going to look into it, if I was going to look into it or not. But, the fess was off the chain, and I loved the dance. And I rocked till six o'clock. I got up and down there, went home, took me a good hard bath, and got me a good cocktail. Not off the bottom shelf, now, off that top shelf. I get the good one. And like I said, we had plenty of water, and the food was good. Everything was real nice. So, my sister and the people from... I don't let you meet the people from Tampa, but I was so busy dancing, I didn't get attention that you meet, let you meet them. But we rocked a while. So, the thing, how's other thing coming on? Y'all coming on good? And Mr. Gayle Mo, and the mayor, I always go to Alama in December, the second week of December, and I always go to the city council. So, everybody got seated, and the mayor, he pointed me out, said, that young lady sitting back there, I wish I could stand. He started signing on my cap. He said, you from Perry, darling? I said, yes, I'm from Perry, darling. I couldn't pronounce your name right. It was a fat ball. He didn't say, he didn't say, he didn't say. But I could pronounce the Gayle Mo name right. He said, why you got on that cap? I said, you see where I'm from? I said, the workers of the Sito Perry, they bought them them caps. He said, I got to see that again. I would cruise on them caps. I said, well, y'all got little crew down here, and we got a bear. He said, that's all right. We can do it. And the fun, and one girl asked, she said, where you get that cap from? I wear camo, I don't even got none. This is what I told her. I might be standing back there. Get down. Who you know? I don't know how you know, but you don't tell. So what's that baby? It's not important who you know. I would turn this person around, because I ain't want no confusion. And so got down in that cab and tucked my cap. He the lady passed. I said, Kevin, why you tucked my cap? Because that cap was dangerous to me. Are dangerous. I said, Karen, why you tucked my cap? Because that cap was dangerous to me. All day. You can get it in there. I said, I don't know that. And the mayor, he, uh, he, he tickled me. He said, we gonna get our employees hate like that. I said, honey, y'all got a eagle down, eagle down that back, eagle people down there for the, and workers back there. He said, we can do it. So he said he was coming up to the fessa, and the city man, he was coming up to the fessa too, but I don't know, he up there because I was in Florida. But they said it had been here one time. That was a nice clean place, and it is a nice clean place. The person was, oh, we lost some cars and things, but I don't know who running it now. But Perry is growing, and people are working together, I think. And I'll tell you another thing. I was outside my sister's house, and the storm come to, other day, the storm come to. Yeah, Jared Home, Jared going home shop, we talked back and forth with him. Dee said, we coming down there and get my aunt. Do you want to come? I said, no, I ain't coming home. I'm gonna stay where, where I'm at. I'm gonna stay right on here and, 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 and stay with you. And, uh, the funny thing, he said, okay. But that was very nice of him to offer me and my sister to come and pick us up. And my sister stayed, her line is a tree and a fence there. Do you know that storm picked up that tree and pushed it back over there? God, it flew it all the time. And I liked it when the, uh, deuce, it used to be deuce in there, but it probably is in there now. I liked it when they located and worked together. And one of the guys, so we had people coming all the way from Manta, and somewhere he told me they came from. I know one was going back home, coming back up here. We saw them trucks going back. And I looked on the background and showed on TV all them trucks. And we were blessed.
We are blessed.
But Mr. Sheller told.
I'd like to take this opportunity to, 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 to make sure that Mr. Gilmore gets you another cap.
Okay, Karen, I took mine.
We're gonna get you another cap. I appreciate the update that you've given us.
And, uh, I called Mr. Gilmore. I said, Gilmore, I see where they're sitting for them to do some houses over on San Diego. So my cousin had called me. I said, honey, I already know, because I have a paper something yet, where I'm in, all in the floor. I paid for houses during for Winston and, and, and Saturday. You only borrow, I said, I'm gonna borrow, honey, I'm missing up. And I'll be, see what's going on. So I miss all y'all. I'm glad to be back home, but ain't no place like home.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dear.
There is something else I wanted to say. We have a good town here in Perry. We have the best police department. Nobody's got better than that. Somebody on TV the other night said they had the best, and I thought, hmm, you ain't been to Perry. But anyway, if anybody's gonna move here from Fort Valley or Warner Robins or Macon, they need to face an application, and if they're approved, they can move to Perry. They need to stay where they are.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll take that under advisement.
They don't need their trouble. They need to keep their trouble there. They got a good town.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me say this now. I'm running, wait, I'm running against you for the marriage issue.
I can't wait.
I would love to speak for you. Can I?
Okay, I can.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope this is for all of our class. This has been the most informative, fun, fellowship, good food class that I've ever attended. I went through Leadership Perry several years ago. This lady, she's the one needs raised. I know she has not been with the city very long. And you know me, all of y'all do. I mean, I know, you know how I feel about the city Perry. These guys on the moon. But this has been the best class I have ever attended, and I'm sure my cohorts feel the same.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Y'all have a good one.
Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you. Item eight is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section thirty-six dash sixty-seven A dash three C. Item eight, the petition for rezoning and annexation application number R dash seventeen dash zero eight. The applicant, Mr. Farrell Kitts, requests the rezoning and annexation of property consisting of seven point seven three acres from Houston County R dash AG to City of Perry R dash AG Single Family Residential District. The property is located at one twenty Sparrow Street. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a request by the property owner to, um... Here we go. This is a request to annex this seven point seven three acre parcel of land. It's located on Sparrow Street, which is a county road, located at the, whoops, located at the top of the slide there. It is an access off of Lake Joy Road. The property is contiguous to the city on the south property line, adjacent to the Washington Place Townhouse subdivision off of Perry Parkway. The applicant is requesting the RAG designation, which in the city requires a five acre minimum block size. Based on the size of the existing property, it would not be able to be subdivided without going through another public hearing process to rezone. As I understand, the applicant is requesting or is planning to build a single residence on the property, and the request for annexation is for access to the city's sewer service. The staff and the planning commission both recommend approval of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood regarding this item at this time? Thank you, sir. Is anyone present who wishes to speak for this application for rezoning and annexation of the property located at one twenty Sparrow Street as described? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Farrell Kitts, six hundred and Amper Street, Kathleen. Obviously, I'm in favor. I'm asking.
Yes.
No, that'd be a question.
Thank you, Mr. Kitts. Would anyone else present like to speak for this application? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this application for rezoning and annexation of the property located at one twenty Sparrow Street as described? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item nine is the review of minutes. Item nine A, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen work session, the October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen pre-council meeting, and the October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen council meeting. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this minutes as presented.
One second.
There's a motion in a second. Are there any additions, releases, changes, or modifications that need our attention at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten is old business. Item ten A, for ordinances for the second reading and adoption. Item ten A one, this is the second reading of an ordinance establishing a franchise fee for natural gas providers in the corporate limits of the city. Mr. Gilmore.
Mayor and council, as we've talked about before, you have an ordinance which establishes a franchise fee similar to what you have for George Fowler, or the cable companies for natural gas providers in the corporate limits of the city. We recommend adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this? Hearing none. Council, this is the second reading and it is time for adoption. If you seek fifth, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we do so adopt the ordinance establishing the franchise fee for natural gas providers in the corporate limits of the city as described. Go. Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten A two, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance that amends the municipal code of the City of Perry by deleting section nineteen dash twelve in its entirety and adding a new section nineteen dash twelve titled derelict vehicles removal by city. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is a modification to the city code to address derelict vehicles and some of the issues or concerns that we had about the legality of our existing ordinance. This takes into account the state law on this issue and, as we discussed last night, provides specific procedures for enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Council, do we have any questions regarding this policy at this time? Excuse me, this ordinance. Well, it's not true. If you amend the code, is it an ordinance, a resolution, or... An ordinance, thank you. Any questions, council? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance that amends the Perry Municipal Code by deleting section nineteen twelve and adding a new section nineteen twelve titled derelict vehicles removal by city as described. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten A three, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Perry Code by adding a new section eighteen dash sixteen entitled Golf Carts Prohibited, which you'll read as follows. The operation and or driving of golf carts, utility terrain vehicles or UTVs, all terrain vehicles or ATVs, and other similar off-road vehicles is prohibited on all portions of city streets and state routes located within the city limits on which the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour or greater. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this goes in and formalizes a procedure that the city has followed for a number of years, which golf carts and UTVs are allowed on city streets, but not those that have a speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour or more because of safety. We recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore or staff concerning this item at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt an ordinance that amends the Perry Code by adding the section entitled Golf Carts Prohibited as described.
Totally.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, do anything on the right of ten old business that we need to address at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven is any other old business. Item eleven A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Eleven D is any other old business from council members? Ms. Phaedra Grace?
I have none.
Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Hunt?
None.
Mr. Jackson?
None.
Mr. King?
None.
Thank you. Item eleven C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. And item eleven D is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Holton?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item twelve is new business. Item twelve A are matters that have been referred from the November sixth, two thousand seventeen work session held last evening, and the November seventh, two thousand seventeen pre-council meeting, which held at five PM this afternoon. We have an item that we need to address. Item twelve A one is a resolution to amend the city's animal retention policy to reduce the city time to seven calendar days. Mr. Gilmore.
Mayor, Mayor and council, remember, we talked about this yesterday. It's a request from the police department to have the timeframe that the animal that is picked up or dropped off at the city care be reduced from the current ten days to seven days. We recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor, excuse me. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution that amends the city's animal retention policy to reduce the city time to seven calendar days as described.
Totally.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Phaedra Grace, does she want to? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve B, for ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Item twelve B one, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property consisting of seven point seven three acres from Houston County R dash AG, the City of Perry R dash AG Single Family Residential District. The property is located at one twenty Sparrow Street. This is the first reading and introduction. Therefore, no action is required by council at this time. Item twelve B two, council, this is the first reading of an ordinance for the annexation of property consisting of seven point seven three acres from Houston County R dash AG, the City of Perry R dash AG Single Family Residential District. The property is located at one twenty Sparrow Street. Again, this is the first reading and introduction. Therefore, no actions required by council at this time. Item twelve C, a resolution for consideration and adoption. Item twelve C one is a resolution that will amend the fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the purpose of this resolution is to begin the phase in for the franchise fee that you approved for the gas system and we recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have a question regarding this item at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution amending the fee schedule as described.
Agreed.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve C two is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute a supplemental lease to provide financing for the purchase of a street sweeper outlined in the two thousand eighteen budget. Ms. King?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor and council, the resolution that you have in four years is to authorize the mayor and the clerk send a lease documents to finance the purchase of the two thousand seventeen Tempo streetsweeper that is being replaced in an amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. This is five-year lease, and the rate is six point, I mean, two point six one percent.
Thank you, Ms. King. Does any member of council have any questions, Ms. King, regarding this item at this time? Ms. King, I believe that the reason for this is that our previous street sweeper was involved in an accident, and we had to replace it, and we did receive some funding from the insurance company.
Yes, sir. The total cost of the street sweeper is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. We received insurance reimbursements of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and four, which is net two hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-six.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute this supplemental lease to provide the financing for the purchase of the street sweeper as described.
Agreed.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve C three is a resolution in support of the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Policy Regarding Municipal Decorporations. This one is my item. Council, you have before you and are familiar with a letter from the City of Stockbridge. You may remember that we have, in the previous Georgia Municipal Association meetings, the City of Stockbridge came before the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Policy Council, and then to the full body for the Georgia Municipal Association Requesting Support. There has been a deal introduced at the state legislative level that will de-annex a significant portion of the City of Stockbridge for the sole purpose of creating a new city. And the City of Stockbridge is not happy about it. And they have asked the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Policy Council, and then the entire body, for support against this move by the state legislature. And Georgia Municipal Association has granted that support. In addition to that, the City of Stockbridge has written a letter to all of the five hundred and thirty-eight some odd cities that are in the state of Georgia, including the City of Perry, asking for a resolution in support of the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Policy Regarding the De-Annexation Legislation to Create New Municipalities, not just for them, but they are worded and as we are creating a precedent. Having said all of that, what we have before us is the request prompted by the City of Stockbridge for the City of Perry to pass a resolution that does indeed support the Georgia Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Regarding the De-Annexation Legislation to Create New Municipalities, and we would be against it. So that's what's before us. Counsel, if you have enough information to make a decision at this time, I'll entertain a motion to support the resolution in support of the Georgia Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Regarding Municipal Incorporations as described.
A move.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. If you see fit, would you please contact the general public, your legislators, and I would strongly encourage you for them to vote no on this particular piece of legislation. Thank you. Item twelve D is the award bids. Item twelve B one is bid number two thousand eighteen dash six, "The Big Indian Creek Restoration." Mr. McHenry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, in your packet you have a contract letter of recommendation from Omogee Inc. Engineering. We solicited to several contractors for the Indian Creek Stream Restoration. This is protection of our easement and sewer line where the creek is eroding away soil. In soliciting, we received two bids back, and our low bidder was LeCay Enterprises. City staff and engineer has reviewed the bids and recommends going with sites one and two for a total of one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. We recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. McHenry. Does any member of counsel have any questions of Mr. McHenry or staff regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept staff recommendation and award the bid to LeCay Enterprises, correct?
Correct.
In the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve D two is bid number two thousand eighteen dash twelve, "Street Mowing." Mr. Gilmore.
Mayor? Mayor and counsel, you have before you the bid tabulation results from bid two thousand eighteen dash twelve, administration, which is the upgraded bowling services and sidewalk trimming for certain streets. I would recommend to you for Main Street, Swift Street, Houston Lake Road, Bacon Road, Sam Nun Boulevard, to award to Real Turf Solutions as the low bidder, and General Courtney Hodges to Urban Environment as the low bidder.
The total for this is thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And will be funded from?
General fund.
General fund. Thank you. Does any member of counsel have any further questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we award the bid for the street mowing to Real Turf Solutions and Urban Environment as described.
A move.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve D three is the solid waste collection bid. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, you have the bid results from going out for bidding for solid waste collection. Recommend to you to award to advanced disposal for the commercial and residential service and on the temporary roll-on, roll-off service that the city get out of that business.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of counsel have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this bid? I might add, at this time, there have been several, well, over the last year or so, myself and city council have not been happy with the service that we have been giving, which happens to be from advanced disposal. So we have had a couple of meetings with them, they've come and made presentations. Counsel made a collective decision to re-bid this particular service because of that. One of the main problems was that they had gone to a trash truck that has an automatic arm that picks up the can and dumps it and then sets it back down, and that has caused some issues. A lot of issues. So when we re-bid this project, we asked them to re-bid it to go back to what's now known as the old style, where they'll have trucks and men or women on the back that'll actually pick the can up and put it on the back of the truck, dump it, and then set the can back down. And if it could be manual, that would be manual in today's world, but that's what we had asked them to bid for, and that's what this bid is. It's more expensive to the company, however, the bids that we have are, Mr. Gilmore, correct me if I'm wrong, equal to or a little less than what we have charged now, is that correct?
A little less.
A little less. They are very well aware of our issues, let's put it that way. And we are going to, if this passes, since administration's recommended to give the award to the low bidder, we take the in-advanced disposal under some new conditions, we anticipate a change in both attitude and service moving forward. For your adification, this is five one-year contracts, so that the city of Perry may, if this doesn't work out, we'd have some options from that standpoint. However, I will point out, however, those options may be limited because there's not that many people that are in this type of business, but we're doing the best we can from that standpoint. This particular contract will take effect the first of January. Having said all of that, counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the bid for, awarding the bid to advanced disposal as described.
A move.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Any extensions? What's the extension?
I refuse to vote for somebody that does such a poor job.
Thank you. Please note that Mr. Hunt is abstaining because of the quality of service he views determined. The motion still carries. Thank you. Item twelve E is the closure of Elko Road from Larry Walker Parkway, South Perry Parkway, November twentieth and twenty-first for an event. Chief Lynn.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, coming forward today to request your approval for these road closures on those days. It may also include Lime Rock Road as well, which is in the same area. With the caveat that this is a weather-dependent event, so if it slips because of weather to continue its day, then we would like permission for that to happen as well. The roads should be closed for a limited periods of time during those days, facilitate this event, and police officers will be on scene to regulate the closures and traffic when they're not closed.
Thank you, Chief. Any member of counsel have any questions, Chief, regarding this road closure request? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the closure of Elko Road from Larry Walker Parkway to South Perry Parkway, confirmed between the twentieth and twenty-first, modified by Chief Lynn's statements for the possibility of another day, including Lime Rock Road as described.
A move.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything under new business item twelve that needs to be addressed at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item thirteen are department head items from the Department of Finance Administration. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Mayor? Mayor and counsel, general public, I'd like to invite everyone out and remind everyone to come downtown Perry, be ready to shop on the Saturday following Thanksgiving. It's Small Business Saturday, that's November twenty-fifth. All of the merchants are, the downtown merchants and the Main Street Advisory Board put together a nice event. It's always well-attended. The merchants will be open from ten to three, and we'll have a passport program. You could win three hundred dollars in downtown bucks if you shop at a certain number of establishments downtown. Restaurants will be open, there will be little games and that type of stuff. It's always a nice festive atmosphere to walk off some of that Thanksgiving weight that you might have gained. So again, everyone, please plan on coming out, November twenty-fifth, downtown Perry. Always an excellent event. If you have any questions or anything, you can see me or Main Street Coordinator, Edman. Thank you. Then I flyers if anyone wants me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. From the police department, Chief Lynn.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, one, again, I just wanted to bring to your attention, and this was actually facilitated by both the police department and the fire department. The kids' journey of Houston County put on a teen maze, which educates eighth graders, in this particular case, a thousand and ten eighth graders across Houston County schools about different subjects. In particular, what we did in conjunction with the fire department is we put on a mock traffic crash with a fatality and DUI driver to educate these children who will be new drivers in probably the next year or so to the dangers and to get their attention early about that. And this was a county-wide event with a whole lot of players, a lot of moving cars. It went really well, and they're planning the next one for May the seventh of two thousand and eighteen. So that's a kickoff of it. That's it. Just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, it was a really good community event. It was months in the bank, we worked hard for months after months after months to bring this together. They did a lot of other areas too, but that was our focus.
Thank you, Chief. They also included the city of Warner Robins, Houston County, and the city of Centerville, and their various fire departments as well, and it took turns. I am familiar with that. It was held on campus at Central toward the Temple College, and they did a very good job with that. These teenagers went in groups, and they saw the results of some decisions that they might make, including pregnancies, and they would, they even dictated that several of them would become pregnant. They put a vest on. They would show that and then told them what would happen to their lifestyles from that, and then had counselors there. They also had a mock jail that they had there. The Houston Medical Center was there with a mock emergency room, and the ambulance would show up and take one of the crash victims from the crash scene and take them into the mock emergency room, and they got to see from the actual responders and then the nurses, et cetera, what would happen. And most of them had never been there to that degree, and I thought it was a very good representation, and they got a lot of information about distracted driving. They, I think they also had the goggles that you can put on, and they put them in a golf cart, and they had to maneuver through some cones in a big parking lot. And some of them didn't do so well with that. It mimicked distracted driving and impaired driving. So it was, it was a very big event, and I do appreciate the city of Perry.
Go ahead, Chief. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Captain James Bug, our school resource officer, Danny Manley, and one of our patrol officers, Aaron Connor, were three people from Perry PD who participated in this and spent their day, and me and Danny, I was ahead of that to make that.
It is a very big thing. It is. Well, thank you. I appreciate our participation. Anything else?
No, sir.
From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you, your men, for their participation as well.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Palmer. Our media specialist.
Nothing else. Thank you.
You did receive an award. Will you stand up and tell us what you did? You participated in the end.
I've participated in the Perry Leadership Institute with the Perry Chamber of Commerce, and I guess every year for the past, I guess, since the inception of it, they give out the Larry Walker Legacy Award, and I received that this year, so I'm honored. It's a, it's a big honor to receive something like that, so.
And then that honor is bestowed upon a member of the class by their classmates.
Correct. Yes.
On that standpoint.
Right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is a big honor, and thank you for your participation. And like your city program, that was a county-wide, I'm not mistaken, and it was something similar, but not exact.
Right. Thank you.
But congratulations, and thank you. There are missing items. Mr. McHenry, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir. Thank you.
And anything for us?
Sir, thank you, Ms. Phelan, for the, for the rest of the council. My name is Pam Rhodes, I'm a twenty-first century partnership. Just letting you know if you have any questions or need some information, what's going on in the face, I can certainly assist you with that. I'll give you, I'll be here for a little while, have some cards if you, if you guys would like those. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Phelan.
Item fourteen, council memorials. Ms. Phelan.
I would only add to an earlier statement, that not only do we anticipate a change in the quality of attitude and service from our solid waste collection, we expect it. And everything else you said about that there was a little bit. As always, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
None.
Mr. Jackson?
None.
Ms. King?
None.
Mr. Gilmore?
None, sir.
Mr. Holbert?
None.
Item fifteen are general public items. Does any member of the general public wishes to address counsel at this time? If you had already done so.
I always have to put my two cents in.
That's fine. Ms. Ma, please state your name before you vote.
My name is Sherry Cunningham. I live in Houston Springs, and my husband was part of your program, and I have never seen him come home from anything as excited as he was. Every week, every time. So I think it's a great program. You did a good job.
Fantastic. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I would like to ask how Mr. Walker is doing.
Mr. Holbert?
Walker.
He's doing good. He's still recovering at Post Lodge, which is right next to there where he... He finds out soon if his donor cells and transplants are taken through, but all indications at this point are that he's recovering well. He seems to be doing well. Gets a little tired, but his mind is good. He's very interested in what's going on here in the city, and what's going on at the office, and what's going on in this community. So we're looking forward to him coming back, and everything looks like he'll be back soon.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item sixteen are mayor items. Counsel, I will remind you of some meetings that we have coming up. On the ninth, this Thursday, we have a legislative appreciation that we always take our state legislators to dinner, and we probably will have some conversations with them this time. I will remind you that we have a joint meeting with the Joint Natural Gas Board, the Municipal Gas Association of Georgia, who basically provides gas for the state of Georgia, but the Joint Natural Gas is the provider for natural gas in the city of Perry. We are one of five cities that own that particular organization. We have some interesting capital needs for growth, not only for the city of Perry, but for the cities of Warner Robins, Byron, Concord, Hawkinsville, that make up that. And we are going to hear from the people who are, are going to explain what those expansion details are so that we can provide the natural gas needs not only for the citizens of the city of Perry, but be in a position to be able to expand for commercial and industrial growth in the years to come. That meeting will be on Wednesday the fifteenth at five or five-thirty? Five, thank you, Ms. Warren, five-thirty, the environment municipal complex. Our next regularly scheduled work session will be Monday, November twentieth, at five P.M. in this room. The next regularly scheduled pre-council and council meeting will be on Tuesday, November twenty-first. Pre-council meetings upstairs in the conference room, council meetings in this room. All of our meetings are open to the public. I would encourage your participation should you so desire. That is the week of Thanksgiving. We will plan to meet. Because of that, please make sure that you are aware of those who may not be as fortunate and do something to make their Thanksgiving a little better. Our thoughts and hearts and prayers go out to the people in Texas. It seems that longer we live, the crazier the world gets. The one thing we can do, though, is watch out for each other, watch out for ourselves. If you see something, say... If you see something, say something. That's the first line of the verse. Never forget. We are here for each other, and we will continue to be the best city that we can be, and people come here for a reason. If there's nothing else to come up for us, thank you for your interest and participation. We stand with you.